That being said, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 on Monday, July 17, 2023. And we've got some consent agenda items that include the minutes of the June 26, 2023 school board meeting. General fund vouchers and purchasing card transactions. Fund vouchers, 1-801-02 through 1-802-72 and 2-92333 through 2-92385. And purchasing card transactions dated 5/21/23 through 6/2023. Got some professional staffing recommendations and some co-curricular staffing recommendations. Don't require a vote, so I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Megan, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So, that brings us to public comments. Do we have any public comments, Angie?
We have not received any prior to the meeting. Would you like me to ask the members of the public?
Please do.
Okay, one moment.
Please do.
All right. If you'd like to make a public appearance by speaking to this board, please utilize the Q and A portion found at the bottom of your Zoom window. In the Q and A, we would ask that you type your name, address, subject of interest, and whether you have discussed this item prior to the meeting with either the district administrator or President Howery. After submitting the information, I would transfer you over to speak to the board. You can give people a couple of minutes if you don't mind.
Okay, we'll give that a couple of minutes.
Nothing as of yet. Let's get just another.
You tell me when.
Okay. We have not had anyone register to speak to the board.
Okay, then we shall move on. Informational items. The Weaver monthly meeting update. Mr. Mooney, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, Craig. Just a review of what the board did back in June. They approved a contract with the Care Service Incorporated. It's another, it's a firm out in Delaware that provides a web-based navigation system to assist school district clients, districts, students, and families in locating and connecting with mental health treatment providers. So they help families streamline to get the resources that they need. They do not provide any mental health guidance themselves. End of the year performance, student performance, academic performance, their math and English language. The high school did meet their goal. The Weaver and Insight made good progress. They didn't quite reach their goal of 5% increase. Graduation rate, their goal is 95%. High school level, it was 85%, so it's getting closer. DCA is 93% and Insight is 42%. So again, we're seeing a gradual increase in that area. Enrollment data, they met their goals in all three schools for the 22-23 school year. And then they highlighted the tenure of many of their teachers that have been there since day one, 10 years ago. And that concludes my report.
So this is their 10-year anniversary year?
You know, I think it's more than that, isn't it, Craig?
Gosh, I don't know. Boy, that doesn't seem like enough, but maybe.
No, because that would be 2013, and when I was employed by the district, there were many years that they talked about Weaver.
Yeah.
But maybe they just went back 10 years.
Yeah, maybe.
Craig, can I?
Please.
We had someone just shortly after we closed the public comment portion register to speak. Would you like to consider that?
Sure.
Okay. So...
Could you hold on just one second, Tom?
I believe that Tom was finished. I think he had said it concluded his report.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Comments are closed, don't they?
Jump back to the matters at hand.
I have a question, Tom.
Actually, I do.
Yes.
So when they calculate those graduation rates, or even like the reading rates and, you know, math rates, do they include the students who were transferred back to their home schools within a certain amount of time? So, you know, those seniors who maybe didn't engage?
It's only data that, for the assessment piece, for students that were there at the time of the assessments. I do not know if it includes students that left after that date.
Okay.
Graduation was kids that actually completed the graduation requirements.
And I just had a quick comment. I saw, I think it was over the weekend, it could have been the end of last week, that they had some terrible weather in Keloma, which I believe is where our, is it Destinations Career Academy that's up there? Anyway, it's the heavy equipment operation facility up there, and they did have some local damage. I don't know if it did anything to that facility or not.
I don't know. I know the Connect program that Erin sent some information out on recently, and I reported out on during the school year, that's located in Green Bay. But the director is located in Keloma. So there might be a piece of Connect in Keloma that I'm not aware of.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thanks very much, Tom.
Sure.
We will move along to facilities renaming, proposed timeline and process. Mr. Turnitzer, the floor is yours.
Excellent. So I wanted to spend some time to you reviewing this document and having a discussion, getting your feedback on a proposed process for considering renaming Conrad LVM Primary School. So for the purpose of our public, I want to go over how we got to this point and review the process and get your feedback as we look at our next steps. So reminder, this really came forward on April 5 when McFarland High School student, Riley Brown, emailed the board requesting that Conrad LVM Primary School be renamed, primarily due to some concerns about actions, historical actions from Conrad LVM related to a racial covenant. And after that point, we started looking at the process with a formal discussion at the board meeting on April 17. And on May 1, you voted to approve appointing a facilities naming committee. And so what I'm going to talk about tonight is possible next steps with that. So we're talking about the idea of a citizens advisory naming committee that would consider renaming Conrad LVM Primary School. And I want to be clear about this, that there's really two decisions. One is, should it be renamed? And if so, then what would that name be? So those are separate things. And the idea would be that we would start in September, inviting people, families, district residents, staff, students to join. I chose September just because that's when kids are, our students are back here in the facilities. And then the board has the right to approve appointments of members to the advisory committee. And hopefully, we'd hold that first meeting in October. And then gave about a year's timeline to make all of the decisions related to that. Now, that's a somewhat arbitrary timeline because I don't want to force it into a certain timeframe just to fit what we think it should be. In terms of the board's role, it's about appointing the members. The board president has the right to appoint a chairperson among the community members. So the idea would be with a citizens advisory committee is that there's someone from the community. They don't make the decisions, but they kind of facilitate the meetings. And of course, ultimately, the board decides what the name of a facility will be, and that requires a full vote of the board. So, you know, keep in mind that the board has a lot of decisions all the way through. You could decide, well, not tonight, but on the next meeting, if we put it on there to vote for the name, you could rename a school. I mean, it really is, really could be that simple of a process, but I know the board really wants to get community input, which I value as well. That committee is about gathering information, reviewing feedback from others. They don't need to have all the information themselves among the group members, and then making a recommendation whether the facility should be renamed, and if so, some names to consider. There's talk in our policies about the committee being representative with more non-staff members. And so I came up with an idea of some numbers, which is open to discussion. I want to run through this first, and we can circle back to it. But the idea of 12 to 16 being a size that's nice representative, but not too many people so we can't get things done efficiently, with five to seven community members, three to five student members, one to three staff, and then board members are welcome to be present and listening to the conversation. The meetings, they would be posted so that the public has notice, and people are welcome to attend and not necessarily participate if they're not a member of the committee, but to listen in. There won't be a set number of meetings because we want to be flexible to that, but we can provide monthly, at a minimum, reports to the board on those kind of things. I talked a little bit about these decisions, so I don't want to revisit those. But if we do decide, if the board does decide that yes, we should rename, then there's a process that I list here. The idea is that you want to make sure that you get as many ideas as you can, narrow down those ideas, and so the public has the opportunity to participate in recommending names, voting on names, you know, giving their feedback, I should say, on names, and ultimately, the board deciding. So I picked four as, you know, no more than four names for the committee to bring to the board, to be shared for consideration. And then the big part that, should we proceed in this direction, that we really, I will be looking to help, for help from a lot of people, is just getting ideas for participants. We will, you know, we'll send it out to people, and we tend to get, as we, with the strategic plan and other things, we've actually been getting a nice response rate from families, but I don't want to limit it just to the people that say yes. So maybe there's some recruiting, maybe there's some people with some historical knowledge that we want to make sure to invite. And I'm happy to do personal recruiting for that, so. And the last thing that's included in this is just the policy 7250. So what feedback do you have, board members, on that draft?
I can tell you that probably since, you know, we first heard from Riley, out and about town, there are folks that feel pretty strongly about this. So I think, you know, we have to remember that there are a lot of different factions throughout the community, and in a lot of situations, those factions have a certain way of feeling about how the district should be run. And I will say that the demographic that has encouraged me out and about not to change it is a more senior demographic in town here, folks that have been living here for a long time. And in the opposite direction, it's more the younger community members, I would say. So this is going to be a controversial undertaking, I think. So we need to tread carefully and make sure that everybody is represented, who needs to be represented in the process. And I think a year is probably about right, you know, given that we don't have any huge turmoil or...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so just the importance of not rushing the process and making sure we get as many voices as we can.
Exactly.
I think in addition to just posting this in community areas to recruit community members outside of the parents and students, maybe running it in the McFarland Thistle would be another place that I'd recommend doing it.
You know, we could look to see when that next outlook maybe is coming out.
Yeah.
Do we get that monthly, or is that quarterly?
Quarterly.
But actually, yeah, that's, because that goes to every household in town.
I believe so. So if the timing worked, that wouldn't be a bad place either.
It'd probably be about the right, like, if it's quarterly, it'd probably be about the right time.
Yeah.
For September.
Okay.
And ask the village to, to post it, or I don't know. Not just on social media, because I think a lot of people we're trying to reach aren't necessarily going to see it on social media, but somehow get it out to some of the community members that they typically, you know, are trying to reach.
Yeah, I mean, they can get those kinds, like, the village, you can get email notifications or text notifications about different stuff like that. Yeah.
We've got an in with the village, don't we? Is there?
Yeah, there's some connections.
There might be some connections.
That'd be a fairly smooth transition there.
We'd do it very efficiently.
Tom and Bruce have patiently waiting, I think.
Yes, and I do have something to say about that. First of all, I think a year is way too long. I think if I'm just going to sign up to do something, I'd like to know sort of proposed dates, how many times they're going to meet. Because if we just throw it out, you know, I'm not going to commit to it if I don't know what my commitment might be. You know, it's going to be three meetings or six meetings, so I think that would be useful. When we named Wabisa, again, that wasn't renaming, that was naming, that was done within, I think, two or three months. Now, naming is easier than renaming. I concur with that. I think the other thing is that we can vote on whether or not we should rename it, but I think we should also include Conrad LVM as one of the four choices. Because I think what will happen is that a lot of people don't fully understand the rationale for possibly renaming the school. Likewise, some people don't understand the history of the name behind the school. So I think there's a whole educational component that has to be done, probably during that initial meeting with the large group. So that would be my input. Shorten the timeline, because I think we can do it. Identify more specifics, what our commitments will be, and possibly keep Conrad LVM in the, one of the four options.
Thanks, Tom.
And, yes, thank you. And Tom, I would respectfully disagree. I think you want the public to realize we're not going to rush this thing through. And I think we got to have faith in the process and with the people that we hire. I think, again, if we try to push this through quickly, I think you could end up having a lot of people upset. It would be very important, I think, Erin, I think you need to make sure that all...
Yep.
All groups are included.
Yeah. Looks like he's...
There's a record for the stack, the deck saying, well, one of them is out of the choice. I think let the committee, I think we got to have faith for you, Erin, is you said that board members could be part of it, but we will be non-voting, I assume. Is that true?
Yes, yeah, because you'll, they'll be bringing forward a recommendation for you to consider, similar to the strategic plan.
Are we allowed to make comments? Yeah, I understand, and I, you know, I was learning on the fly on that one, Erin, you have to forgive me. But I would like to be involved if I can, but I want to know ahead of time what my role is, and that would be important, I think, to have, you know, at least a board member kind of seeing what's going on, to get a feel for what's going on, and if nothing else, report back to the rest of the board about, you know, how things are going. I just think that transparency is so crucial to this whole, this whole thing.
I think we all agree there.
I think generally, with board members attending this sort of thing, if you can keep your role as close to that of an observer as possible, it probably is best, because sometimes people are swayed because it's a board member saying something.
I agree, Tom. I mean, Craig, I totally agree, so thank you.
But Craig, what if they ask you? I mean, I'm in a whole different situation since I worked there and lived there for 27 years. I mean, I would suspect that someone might ask me what I thought, and do I not answer them?
Hmm.
And the other thing is, is that I think we process ourselves to death. I mean, it is July 2023. To me, we can complete a thorough process, have everyone involved, informed, educated, to make a decision by next May.
I guess we have to look at the rest of the priorities on our schedule in the upcoming school year. That, it would be nice to think that we could do that, but if there's anything, I honestly believe we need to really be cautious and take our time, would be something like this, that we know is going to be controversial, you know, that we know there's going to be divided opinion. Therefore, only, you know, half plus of the people will be satisfied with the result. And I don't know what, I don't know what typically is done in terms of including the name you're thinking of removing among the options for the new name. I'd have to think about that for a second. I honestly don't know exactly how I feel about that. Erin, would you get anything?
Well, we certainly have to vet any of the four names that are presented back to the board, so we don't, yeah, find ourselves in another predicament.
No, exactly.
And Tom, I would just like to add that I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I think the commission or the committee, whatever, they're going to have, that it's going to be fully, you know, reviewed and studied and vetted, whatever, they will have gone through it, but I don't think the public will. And I think the key is, we don't want to get out too far, or you don't want that committee out too far. And have them kind of in the dark, and all of a sudden, a decision is made. I think you want to try to, as much as possible, keep them informed as what's going on, and then when it comes time to those final four names, you really give some insightful information for reasons behind it, both pro and con.
And I can understand that, Bruce, but on the other hand, when you stretch it out, we tend to lose focus, and the community as a whole...
Did he freeze?
Yeah, now Tom froze.
I think this being the first round of discussion on this.
There were storms.
I don't know how much additional discussion we, you know, need to have at this point.
I think Megan had something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. I think, first of all, I think it's a really well-thought-out process, so thank you for that, lots of details considered. I like some of Tom's comments in terms of, I mean, I don't want it to take a year, but I think we do need it to be as thoughtful of a process as possible, and I think to Bruce's point, I think it will need, I think the committee would definitely be able to do it in a shorter amount of time, but it is going to be that, that public education piece of it. To the point about having the current name as part of the four, I feel like this doesn't feel like the right time to discuss that, because I feel like it'll, if that's one of the choices that they want to recommend to us, that will happen organically through a thoughtful process. And it is, I mean, it's a big deal, and it's, I mean, when we recommended this, it was, that's why we recommended that we move forward with it, because it is a big deal, and want to make sure that we're making the right decision that the community wants, and that's right for our strategic plan and our equity goals and all of that. And I would caution us on, I mean, I'm, you know, one of my leading strengths is empathy, right? So when I think about the name of a building, feeling potentially hurtful or triggering to someone, that, because of whatever reason, that sometimes takes more weight for me in a decision than historical reasons for keeping the name, or because it's always been that way, or, you know, things like that. So I think, I don't know, I think, you're right, Craig, we just, we have to be very careful and thoughtful and get lots of voices involved, and I would love for it to take less time, but I think we have to let the process play out, too.
Absolutely agreed, and by letting the process play out, maybe it will get done quicker. But, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to set, you know, unsurmountable barriers in the way, but I just, I just am very concerned about making sure that that portion of our community that probably isn't going to read social media, you know, may not even have email, they're out there, we need to get to those folks, too.
Well, and I want to point out, you know, one of the comments that I think we received as a board already regarding this actually was received in a written letter.
Yes.
And so I think that that's important to take into account, right, that we need to make sure we include that population, and I agree with you, I think that the four names that are recommended, that will all happen organically. I don't think that we need to set a precedent, that there's an expectation. I also think we need to be very careful about our own feelings on this, because I don't want that to influence anything. I think what's brought to us needs to happen because it's been discussed and thought through, not because they feel there's something that we want to hear one way or another.
Yeah, that's true. Well, actually, that was the other thing I wanted to say. I think, I feel somewhat strongly that board members aren't really involved in the public part of the process. I think, I think there is too much risk of influence, or people aren't going to feel free to say what they really feel, and/or they might try to influence in a different way. And I don't, I think it's, I think it's cleaner if we aren't. That doesn't mean that we can't observe, maybe they're recorded, maybe it's, you know, we watch virtually, I don't know. I mean, I just want to make sure that people feel like they can say what they want to say, and I think that that is a risk, having any of us there.
It is. Anytime your presence, you don't necessarily have to say a thing.
What do you got, Bruce?
You guys are so darn good. Well, point well taken, Megan and Craig, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
I think what I'll do is I'll bring this back to you for discussion. I might make some changes to the proposal and bring it back to you at a future board meeting before moving forward. to the proposal and bring it back to you at a future board meeting before moving forward. The big thing I think I want to get feedback from you, and I, and it sounds like there might need to be some thinking, is whether or not we have, I could put some more details because I think Tom is right. People don't want to make a commitment to something that's just open-ended. You know, for the rest of your life, you're on the naming committee. So, I feel like I could put a little more structure to it. And I think the question that I want you as board members to consider is, do you want it to be sort of two separate decisions that are sequential? Or, you know, what Tom is sort of suggesting is almost both things happen at the same time. Is, is here's a bunch of names that you might consider coming down to four and having C E P S be one of those. Or sequential. First decision is, should we rename it? Is the name not a name that we want, you know? And then if, if the answer is, we're fine with the name, you know? Let's say the committee recommends that, the board agrees, then it's done. Then it stays the same. And then the second step would be, if it, if it is not, if, if there, there's a recommendation for a change, then you start the process of, okay, what names are we looking at?
I think it may.
Or at the same time. I think that's, that's kind of what I need some direction on.
I kind of feel like deciding whether or not we are indeed going to back changing the name should be, be first.
I agree. I think it should be more sequential.
And then our, our, our move in the second piece would be determined by? Diverse.
Okay. Because I do think that Tom's right, that decision about what name can actually move maybe a little faster than
Probably.
Should we change it? Because that, we're going to need to get some historical perspective, you know, how we got to the name that we did, what do we know, what's fact, you know? I, I also want to make sure we vet, vet it well. So, that's helpful for me.
Okay. Does that work for you, Bruce? Thank you. Okay. All right, moving on, the district administrators' report.
Oh, here we are. All right, so some things to recognize. I had some important recognition. Just want to really give a lot of gratitude and recognition for Alicia Fix and Stu Schaefer and their work with, with MRAP and as well as the, the Angie O'Donnell Aquatic Center. It's just amazing the amount of activity that occurs here during the school year, but also during the summer. And a lot of the, I've been receiving several comments from really ecstatic parents about some of the new offerings through our recreation program and just how well-received that has been. So, I just wanted to thank them for continuing, always adding more and doing, doing it better. Also wanted to recognize our Family Equity Council. They've had three meetings now. Between 12 and 20 members per meeting, really engaging, deep thinkers, great conversations. Brittany Brazel, our new Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Coordinator, was able to join us for the last meeting and just said, what do you think I should know? And led to a great conversation about, particularly about mental health needs for our students and students with disabilities, but just great conversations for that group. Also, our second summer school session is underway and will end this week. And then we start Camp Kindergarten next week. So, a lot of thanks to many amazing staff, of course, leadership with, with Melissa Foal and Carly Cherick, as well as Kelly Vedder through, as the principal, summer school principal. But really impressed with how things are run. It's so efficient and well-structured and engaging academically as well as socially for our students. Wanted to recognize our custodial staff who continue not, not just to clean in the summer, but improve things. Just make things better, take care of some, some important maintenance. Moving staff from room to room, staff that are moving, very impressive. Our administrative team is also involved in many summer projects, so thanks to them. Most recently, we've been, we've spent two full days together working on our behavior response plan so that we're more consistent in our response to behavior and it's done in alignment with our, our goals. And then we had a very generous donation to the McFarland Boys Golf Program for, from Advanced Landscape. So, I just wanted to acknowledge them for their generous donations.
Well, that certainly is nice.
Yeah.
Donation.
It's nice. Yeah, it is. It is. I just think it's nice to share that with the public when those things happen. Tom is back.
I'm back, thanks.
You didn't miss a thing.
Finally.
I just wanted to get into some, some of the photos. Speaking of summer school and, and different activities this summer, we had talked about the, the Juneteenth celebration, but just want to make sure you saw some visuals from that wonderful event, first annual. Very exciting. And so, some summer school, second grade reading games. We're very good at disguising learning and see some really smiley.
That's an important part of summer school.
Yeah, it is. That it is. Some math skills and dice games that they were doing. Just gives a lot of flexibility for teachers to do different things. And we have so many district staff involved in the teaching. I think that really helps. Engineering. The other thing you'll see here is some, some older student volunteers that participate in summer school. That is really helpful for them and for our kids as well. Some recess games, right? I don't know how they're going to get out of there, but I would be stuck. Of course, you know about our Speed, Power and Acceleration Program. So, you can see that group working hard with our inspirational leaders. Ryan Rothman's over there. A lot of success if you have kids that have been involved in that. And we had several staff that attended the Professional Learning Communities Conference. It was just recently held in, here in Madison. So, this is through an international group that does, does training. And every once in a while, we get lucky enough to have them in Madison. And I would say out of all the professional development that I have had, it's always the most powerful. They do an excellent job. There's, yeah, you know, every once in a while, there's a you rah rah thing. But more importantly, they give you really practical tools to help improve your system. That's not tied to a specific program. It's kind of the way that you do things. The questions that you ask, how you collaborate, the structures that you build. So, staff always come back really excited about that. And then in terms of upcoming events, I mentioned Camp Kindergarten coming up. August is National Truancy Prevention Month. I always think that's interesting that they do that in, in August. So, attendance is good in August. No, but it is true that we do actually, as a district, we're working on our attendance policies and we'll have that ready for the start of the school year. But we do reach out to families in August, families that, whose kids have struggled to get here and just start, how can we get, make sure they start the school year off well? It is also Get Ready for Kindergarten Month appropriately in August. We have our board meeting on the 7th and then we are working on scheduling a board work session or also known as a retreat, but no SPA for August. And so, that, that concludes my report. Welcome, any questions?
Quick random question about Camp Kindergarten. How long, does it last? Like, what is, what, how long is it?
So, it's a half a day. So, there's a morning session and an afternoon session. And the, the, it's through the 24th to the 27th and then the 31st to the 3rd.
Got it, okay.
So, these sort of week-long opportunities. So, to me, it's, I just, the last year was the first year that I went. And it's just precious to see how excited everybody is for them to be there. And I was so impressed with how our staff welcome both the students, but more importantly, the, the families in some ways because they need more reassure, reassurance than the students do. And it's exciting, you know, to see these kids that we'll be seeing walk across the stage in, in a few years.
I'll say in regards to SPA, which it's been very popular for many kids. And I think especially for the older kids who can't partake in summer school, this is a great way for many of our kids to be active in the summer. It's affordable. I know it's been very popular where they actually, I think, filled up so quick, they added more sessions. And, and it's just like when I come to the school and see all these kids going in and out, it's just, it's fantastic. It's such a great opportunity. And I know a lot of kids who aren't necessarily athletes enjoy doing it.
I know I spoke to my granddaughter just today and they compliment Mr. Rothwell for the, the program that he's putting together and the positive energy that he shows. Yeah, I think, I think it's fantastic that, and, and to see the number of female attendees back, back, not even that many years ago, you didn't see a lot of our, our girl athletes or non-athletes in the strength and conditioning programs and in the fitness center. Now, it's probably 50/50 from what I see. So, congratulations to everyone involved. That's a, that's a great opportunity in the summer.
Can I ask what the cost of that is?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't want to misspeak, but it's like under $25 for the entire summer. And it's four, it's an hour long and it's four or five days a week, depending on your age. And they rotate between weights and outside cardio, so.
Yeah, again, I just want to make sure that students that are unable to afford even the $20, there are some options for them to participate.
We, we have never turned anyone away because of financial issues from any of our clubs, organizations, activities.
But, but how do families know that the waves can be, or the fees can be waived? Is the word of mouth or?
I think it's in the, I think there's something in the MRAP packet when it all comes out that says that.
Okay, good, good.
And I think the other, the other thing that happens with SPA is there's a fair amount of, recruiting isn't the way, but encouraging kids to sign up that may, you know, not have been involved in other things or not be interested. And that's one of the things that I think, given that we have so many staff that lead our recreation programs that teach, that really helps kids feel comfortable because they know Mr. Rothwell or, you know, some of our other facilitators. Good questions, Tom.
That's a great question, though, Tom. It's, it's, if nothing else, at least anyone watching this will know now that there's no financial reason to have someone not in one of our activities. Okay, anything else from anyone? Otherwise, we'll move along to presentation and action on COVID-19 protocols.
All right, here we go.
And I've got, "The administration is recommending that the district replace our current COVID-19 protocols with the General Illness Guidance that is used for other illnesses as is stated in the Health Services Parent Handbook." Lauren and I will be sharing this recommendation in this report. If you are in favor of the presented changes, the following motion is in order. And if someone could make that motion, we could have a discussion if needed.
Let me, if you wouldn't mind, if I can give our little presentation first.
Okay.
Because, you know.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. You're, you're excited to get to that, that point, move in this meeting. I appreciate it. This won't take long, though. But I just want, it's important, I think, that people have the facts about what we're recommending and how we got to this point. So, just, you know, as, as President, President Howard said so well, we're recommending that we basically move to a model where we're treating COVID as we treat all of our other illnesses, which is indicated in our Health Services Parent Handbook. So, those guidelines about, you know, when kids should stay home and those things, we'll be reviewing that. Talk a little bit about the background. And then Lauren's going to talk about our COVID cases, what, what we saw, kind of the trends over time and also the protocols. And so, the format is going to be current protocol and what that would look like with what we're recommending so that the board has all the information they need in order to make an informed decision. Now, want to be really transparent with, with what the recommendations are that, that we've received. So, CDC, DHS and PHMDC, the Public Health Madison Dane County. They have a consistent recommendation with five days isolation for those who test positive and masking for five additional days, but they may return, students may return, staff may return after that first five days of isolation. The five-day isolation for individuals who don't test but are symptomatic. Districts are no longer required to submit positive case, cases to Public Health Madison Dane County. The Department of Health and Services is no longer offering a school testing program and that's been for quite a while. DPI has sort of said, nope, we're not going to issue any more COVID guidance. And we did consult, Lauren spoke with Dr. Merwin, who recommended what we're proposing to you for consideration is that, that the district respond to COVID as it would for any other illness and not require the isolation, period. That is in the recommendations from those other places. And so, we're going to kind of jump in. And Lauren, who's been such a leader with all this work and is our resident expert, is going to take us through. Resident, resident expert.
Didn't even know he wanted it. So, this slide here you'll see is our positive cases from the 21, 22 school year and then our 22, 23 school year. And really, the important part you'll see is our overall number at the bottom. So, for 21, 22, we had 912 positive cases reported to us, right? These are all cases that people reported to us or they reported to Public Health and Public Health let us know. And so, last year for 22, 23, you'll see that overall number dropped to 290. So, those were the number of positive cases reported to us. So, quite a drastic difference from one year to the next. All right, the next five slides are going to all be the procedures that we have followed and what we're recommending. And so, I'm going to go through them all and then I'm going to pause and see if you have any questions. All right, so this first one is just what we're asking parents to do to monitor illness. So, last year, our guidance was specific to COVID. So, we had a very specific COVID symptom checklist that outlined if you had one of these symptoms or if you had two or more of these, then you couldn't come to school or you had to test and either test negative and come to school, or if you tested positive, you, you would then have to isolate for those five days. What we are recommending is following the general illness guideline, guidelines that we have for any illness. And that is if you have a fever of 100.4 or higher, that you would stay home for 24 hours once that fever breaks. If you have a deep uncontrollable productive cough, you would stay home until that clears up. And then if you have any vomiting or diarrhea, then that would also, you would stay home for those 24 hours until, until you are feeling better. So, kind of following that guidance. And then the next side, the next two sides are actually regarding what we do when there is a positive case. And so, previously, when a staff or a student said they, reported that they had tested positive, then they were isolating for those five days and returning on day six and were masking from day six to day 10. They were, they had a separate lunch plan and a separate snack plan because they couldn't be unmasked in the buildings. So, moving forward, we're recommending that if a student tests positive, student or staff tests positive, that they stay home until they are fever-free or feeling better for 24 hours. So, again, when they are feeling up to returning and feeling like they are able to participate in school, then that they could return. And that masking would And that masking would be encouraged, but it would not be required. And so for our, our same procedures with a positive case, um, last year, we determined that we were not going to contact trace for any school activities other than high-risk athletic exposures, which we didn't have any that we had to contact trace for last year. Um, so we didn't need to use it. And that we still notified all of our K-five families when there was a positive case in the classroom. So families received a notification every single time there was a positive case in their classroom. And, uh, I will just note this, we have a handful of illnesses or events that happen that we notify families for, that we are also reevaluating to see, head lice being one of them, that it's not necessarily something we need to notify a whole classroom anymore about. We continued to notify Public Health of all positive cases until about May when they said, "We don't want your notifications anymore." Uh, and that, uh, we, our team and Health Services, so myself, the school nurse, uh, Mr. Tarnitzer, we met and always monitored our positive cases. So we had a tracking sheet that we were always kind of making sure that we didn't have, um, kind of a cluster of cases in any specific place. And so, moving forward for next year, we're not recommending any contact tracing throughout the district for any activities. We're looking to discontinue that K-five positive notification for the classrooms. Um, we will no longer, uh, notify Public Health and, but we will still continue to monitor all positive cases. I would anticipate we will still have families who call us to let them know, let us know that their, their child has tested positive and staff will let us know. And we will continue to track that for any patterns, just in case, as we would for any, any other illness. If we would see a cluster of anything else, then we would, you know, sometimes send additional cleaning, uh, crews to that area, uh, and sometimes even notify the classroom if it's a, more than what we would expect to see. All right, the next slide is our response to an exposure. So most of the time that, we actually have very high vaccination rates in this district. And so for most of the time, if, if an individual was exposed, they could continue to attend school. Um, we didn't have many people even call this year to say if their child has been exposed or a staff member to say, "I've been exposed, what do I do?" Um, it was probably less than ten phone calls that I think we've probably received of just questions, people know, uh, knew what to expect. Um, we did have the test-to-stay program, which for our individuals who are not vaccinated, they could test every day in order to stay in school. That program, uh, was discontinued at the end of May. So we will no longer, um, be receiving any kind of free tests, either our rapid or our PCR tests. We will not have available anymore. Um, so therefore, we're recommending going forward that if anyone has been exposed, that they could still attend school and just monitor themselves for symptoms. All right, and this last page is just, um, an overview. So I'm gonna skip the first column because I, and kind of talked a little bit about all the things that we did last year. And then, moving forward, the recommendation being that we will no longer require an isolation period for individuals who have tested positive. And we'll no longer require a quarantine period for individuals who have been exposed. We'll no longer have the COVID dashboard. And that is, we had on our website, it was updated weekly of the number of positive cases. I don't believe it got a lot of, uh, traction this year. There weren't, there were a few weeks I may have forgotten to update it and there were no reminders that were sent to me saying, "Hey, you didn't, you didn't update it this week." So I'm not sure how frequently people looked at it. And so we'd like to discontinue that. We will continue to monitor and evaluate all positive cases and then we'll no longer send those notifications to our K-five families. Any questions on any of those procedures we're recommending?
I do have a couple of things.
Go ahead, Tom.
Lauren, uh, the second slide that you showed, you know, you, you showed the one with positive cases, then you showed the next slide. You talked about, um, uh, okay, next, uh, next one? Okay, recommended procedures, okay? The second bullet says, "Please keep your child home from school, et cetera." Why don't we just eliminate the word "please" and just say, "Keep your child home from school." Because that would be in line with some of the other wording that we have. Because please sounds like, you know, you're, you're sort of begging the families to leave their kids home at school, you know, if, if they're sick. Why not state, why not state the expectation, "Keep your child home from school"?
We can make that adjustment. That is an easy adjustment to make.
And then another one, a couple of slides, maybe the next slide, Lauren? Oh, okay, second bullet on the recommended procedures that said masking is encouraged but not required. Masking is encouraged for how long?
Um, it, it would be for the entire time that you are symptomatic, so, right? Public Health would tell you until day eleven that masking would be encouraged.
Okay, as long as that's clear to everybody. And then, I think the last slide that you had, where we'll no longer notify parents of K-five students if there's someone in the classroom that has tested positive. I'm presuming that in those classrooms, we have medically at-risk students, but you will follow what we have traditionally done as far as informing, you know, a class, if a child has measles or mumps or contagious disease, especially if a child in that classroom has cancer or, uh, something, a delayed immune system.
Of course. Yep. So we work all, of course, with all of our families who have students who are medically fragile and they have different plans because we do have to report different illnesses to them, just so that they are aware of what's, what's happening in their child's classroom.
Yeah, yeah, just want to, uh, make sure. And then last, I just want to compliment you, Lauren and Erin, for all you did during that COVID crisis a couple of years ago. You know, I was on the board, but I certainly observed all the board meetings and all the information that you continuously provided and updated to the community. It was second to none, so thank you.
You're very welcome. I was actually, as I was preparing for this meeting, was really happy that we wouldn't be meeting till 1:00 AM and that this could be the last time I may have to talk about COVID to you.
Oh.
I mean, I could, yes.
One, uh, one last question. In the media, they're talking about RSV, you know, coming out sometime. Any concerns here or is this something we're gonna watch and wait for?
It is something that we will monitor and watch and, and adjust if we need to.
Okay, thanks.
RSV is better one for that. We don't even really test for it, but it's, it's something that we've probably all been exposed to and had, so it's not as.
Is there more now than typical or is it just kind of?
It's always there. It, but it's not something that insurance even really covers for testing after a certain age in most of the population.
That's interesting.
I think one of, one of the things that you have is just a media interest in
Yeah.
creating excitement and panic
Yes.
over the next latest thing to be afraid of. And so I think as a district, we're in that difficult spot and as parents are in terms of you don't want to underreact and you don't want to overreact, so.
What, um, are other districts in the area doing as far as following the CDC guideline or kind of changing their recommendation to be similar?
Many districts around us have moved to dropping all of their COVID guidance. Uh, and for, right, a variety of reasons, um, but I am not sure. I'm trying to, I would imagine Madison is following.
Yeah, I don't know what Madison is doing.
Haven't heard any updates from.
Later to make that change. But many districts in the area moved in May.
Yes.
When the, I'm, the language escapes me, but the crisis was determined.
The endemic.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the pandemic was, you know, when that crisis was considered by the federal government to be over and, you know, including, you know, our neighbors in Stoughton and sent things out right away saying, "Okay, yep, we're done." And we, we decided, as you know, to continue through the school year and not make any changes, but that's what most districts have. And we've actually, like, the data dashboard, I don't know other districts that were continuing a data dashboard
Yeah.
through the school year other than ours. Um, there may have been, but I, I, most discontinued.
Do we still have the, the occasional positive case come through? Just kind of dribbles and dribbles and drabs?
I think, you know, it's probably a mix of, you know, people not wanting to test as much, so they're not feeling well. Um, and then even, you know, when they test positive, they don't necessarily have to notify us. They can keep their, their child home and just have them home sick. Um, so we, you know, I think for the most part, people notify us and I think will continue to notify us and ask
Sure.
for what our guidance would be. Uh, but it will be, I think, very different moving forward and I would anticipate, again, much lower cases next year than this year.
We do have, um, some standard operating procedures that we just wanted to remind you of as well. And these are just practices that we have. Oh, you have a question before then?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did have a question. And actually, maybe you'll cover it in standard operating procedures. But from what it sounds like, so for families who might still be concerned about exposure and things like that, um, it sounds like from what I heard, we're still monitoring the cases and keeping track of them
Yes.
so families could call the district and find out that information if they wanted it, right? Um, what about for, um, just for attendance for the kids who, if they are keeping them home for five days or isolating for five days? Regular, like, get a medical note from your doctor, you know, just so it's impacting attendance?
We would likely, when I, I'm also reviewing our attendance guide, um, if a person, if a family member called in, said their child had tested positive for COVID, we likely wouldn't require a medical note if they said, "We want to, you know, keep them home and isolate them for the five days." We're not gonna count that against their attendance.
Okay.
And that has been a pretty consistent procedure the last three years. Um, I would say, you know, there will be less than a handful of times where a child may have gotten COVID four times in a year, that then we may have required some medical documentation. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Great question.
Anything else? Bruce, if you got anything? Okay, uh, Kate, Megan?
No.
No?
So.
Before you go.
We're not done yet, though.
All right.
Sorry.
I interrupted you on the next step.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So Erin had started this slide of standing operating procedures. So these are things that we would continue to do regardless of our approach to COVID, right? Our cleaning and disinfection, um, we will continue to clean those high-touch, uh, surface areas, the frequently used areas of our restrooms, health offices, isolation areas, um, using cleaning products that are EPA-approved, you know, encouraging hygiene for both of our kids and our staff frequently and making sure all of our, our restrooms and breakrooms and classrooms, I have the supplies that they need. And then our ventilation system, um, will continue to exceed the recommendation, the guidance. Don't ask me a lot about ventilation because that was not an area that I am an expert in. Through the line there.
Air changes and such can get pretty complicated.
Yes.
And that is, you know, this, uh, not just about COVID, right? It's about all illnesses.
I think this is one of the positives probably to come out of, you know, the whole COVID thing is that we're more aware, you know, of hygiene and keeping things clean, for sure.
Yeah. So again, here's our recommendation, you know, kind of return where we started, which is that we're recommending that the district replace our current protocols, um, with the general illness guidelines that's used for other illnesses. So discontinuing that communication data dashboard, still collecting information and monitoring it and no longer requiring isolation periods.
Okay. Before you go, I would just like to piggyback on Tom and just, I know you have a team that worked diligently throughout this, uh, pandemic, but I, I thought, uh, your performance was incredible.
Well, thank you, Craig.
To stay on top of everything that you needed to stay on top of in the worst of times. I frankly don't know how you did it and came out on the other end whole. I trust you did.
Yes.
But, uh, I, I just wanted to, to express my appreciation for sure for the great work that you've done the last long time.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you very much.
You probably never thought you were gonna be sitting here presenting this, did you?
I mean, I never thought I would, you know, when I, when I took this job initially, I was like, "Health services, I don't really, man, I don't know anything about it." And really, in three years, I'm feeling pretty well-versed in the Health Services Department.
I bet.
And, you know, we have a wonderful team and really the last three years, it is all of those people who have made, you know, me being able to present here knowing the information
Yep.
because of them. It is the wonderful people that we have working here.
Please pass our appreciation to them as well.
Will do.
But each, every team needs a leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think maybe a motion is in order. Right?
Yes, yeah. Thank you for your patience. Yes. I just want the public to hear everything.
Yeah, absolutely. It was important.
So on that lovely note, I will move to replace the current COVID-19 protocols with general illness guidance that is used for other illnesses as is recommended by our wonderful administration.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Our next action item is action on first reading of policies. Too numerous for one person to read right at this point.
Unnecessary.
But, uh, I think we, we know the, the crux to what we're after here, so I would look for a motion, um, to support the changes that were made, uh, to the various and sundry policies and procedures listed in the agenda. Then we can have discussion.
Don't we want, Craig, don't we want to make the motion to approve the first reading of these policies?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, correct. And then we can discuss anything, any questions that we have out there.
Yep.
So it would be, I move to approve the first readings for policies. Oh, one, zero, zero, oh, one, seven, five, two, two, one, zero, two, 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 one, two, four, three, zero, three, two, one, five, four, two, one, five, five, three, three, zero, five, five, one, two, seven, four, three, four, seven, four, four, zero, eight, four, zero, five, three, one, one, two, four, one, one, two, as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Megan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kate, discussion?
Yes, I have, I have a few items that.
Sure.
Um, more so for clarification. Okay, then the first one is under policy, uh, copy of definitions, policy zero, one, zero, zero. It's the definitions. And Erin, under legal notices, what are some examples of published notices requiring more than one posting? Because in the policy, it said, "Some may be posted once, twice, or three times." What's the criteria for that?
Yes, and I don't know if you know more, Angie, but there's, what's that? Yeah, I think there's, there's certain things like with, with elections, property that have, um, specific indications that they have that extra level of notice. I don't have those memorized, um, but they are dictated by law, which level of notice you have to provide, um, based on the nature of it.
Okay. I think I was just curious.
I could track that down and see which are, because you're, you're more concerned about the one that is the class three, which is three notices?
Two and three, probably. Again, if you just point me in the right direction, you know, I don't want you to have to.
Yeah, curiosity, yeah, I don't have those memorized, but I'm happy to, happy to share that.
Okay. The next is, uh, under the category of voting. And are we set up to vote virtually as a board, uh, for items deemed quasi-traditional function? And I'm not sure what that is, Erin. Could you sort of describe that?
So, so you're saying that the last definition for voting?
Well, what does it mean to where we can vote virtually for items deemed Well, what does it mean to where we can vote virtually for items deemed quasi judicial function?
I don't know what that term quasi judicial means. But I certainly, obviously, we are set up to vote virtually as you have been. Oh, here they are.
Quasi judicial because there were.
Oh, I see.
The way that we've experienced them, right?
The lawyers, they, they just say it's not, it's a hearing, but it's not a trial.
Right.
So I, yeah, that would be.
Yep.
That would make sense that that's what that is.
I didn't realize they had those examples there.
Okay.
Yeah, anything that is of a hearing nature. So termination hearing is, is an example involving staff and then an expulsion would be one involving students.
So my question is, if, for example, I have to zoom that, that session, are we set up to be able to do that? Because usually that's done in closed session?
Right. Closed session generally.
No, but you do.
We do discuss.
You do for those, those, like an expulsion hearing.
That's true.
So that is, you know, and the language is clear, it may be permitted after consultation. And so, you know, one of the things I know that I've heard before is there needs to be efforts made to, to ensure that the information is private, that wherever you are, that there aren't other people around, those kind of things. If that were the case. So I think that's what the may be permitted is what measures would a board member take to ensure that, that information is confidential?
Good clarification. Then under the next policy is policy one, seven, five, I'm missing a number. It's board policy on copy of association members. And the first three numbers might be one, seven, five. I see, okay. I see that we are no longer going to be considered as members of national school board associations. And can you describe the rationale for that, for us not belonging to that? And then in the policy, it talks about joining the consortium of state school board associations.
So that was a decision, it predates my time as, as a district administrator. But that was a decision that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards made to no longer remain affiliated with the National School Boards Association. And I, I would feel ill-equipped to comment on their rationale. I mean, I know that others maybe could. I don't know if there's board members that have more information than I do about that, but that was the rationale.
I don't have more information about that, Tom. I think, I know that, I think it happened shortly around the time that we joined the board last year. I remember seeing communications from WASB about it, but I don't remember why. The rationale made sense to me at the time, but I don't remember exactly why.
Again, I was just curious because I know sometimes a board member will vote in the national association convention. But if you don't have to be a member of that association but still attend, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And then under board policy on curriculum development, two, two, one, zero, under the letter G, Erin, it talks about provide regular curriculum, what I would consider core areas. Is there irregular curriculum or what, what, you know, why do we call that regular curriculum?
In the elementary grades, provide regular instruction in reading, that, that's what you mean?
Probably, yes.
My interpretation of the word regular there would mean frequent, you know, ongoing versus, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna have a social studies week. You know, that it's going to be on, ongoing throughout the school year. That would be my interpretation of regular. I don't know if the board members have other thoughts.
Then I would suggest replacing regular with either ongoing or another word that you used.
I can look into that. You know, I think some of that may be right out of statute. So I would just want to make sure that it's consistent with that.
That's the only thing we can't, we can't make any changes to though. If it's from statute.
But I can check.
Yeah.
And I, and I understand that, but it's confusing coming from a special ed background. We talked about regular ed and special ed, regular curriculum, special ed.
Oh, I see.
I get you now.
Yeah, again, it.
Sorry, it is used in several of the letters.
Mm-hmm.
So if we are able to change it, it would clarify those others as well.
It, it would, yeah.
I can definitely check on that.
Okay, thanks. And then board policy two, 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 one, board policy on special observance days?
Yes.
I have a question. Does anyone know what Great Hunger Day is on March 17th?
St. Patrick's Day?
It is St. Patrick's Day.
But that is.
But I wonder, but I wonder if we actually observe Great Hunger Day?
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
I had to look it up, Erin, and it deals with the potato famine in Ireland, yeah, back centuries ago. But it's just one of those special observance days. I was wondering why we have it, but.
It's not a choice that the district made. So this is a choice that our legislature made about what days our.
What day is?
Schools are required to observe.
And I think we have to get back to the state legislators and ask them what the Great Hunger Day is and their suggestions on how to observe it.
I wonder how many would know.
Yes. And yet they created the law.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I, yes. I hundred percent agree.
There's a few more in there as well.
Yes, I didn't want to name any names, but.
At least I knew the rest of them, you know? And then under board policy two, four, three, zero, district sponsored clubs and activities. I think, I think under letter D, I don't have the policy in front of me, Erin, but I think it's under letter D, participates, participate results in academic credit. You have the, are involved in a sponsored club or activity. And do we know if many students receive credit when they join a club or a district sponsored activity?
It is, I, I don't know if this will qualify or not, but I know that some of the jazz clubs, jazz bands are, might fall in that category.
Music, yes. But what about like the Black Student Union Club? Or other clubs that we have at the high school?
Not that I can think of. No, I mean, I know there's like youth apprenticeship, those kind of things, of course, but I don't know of any.
I think it has to almost be built into the schedule.
Yes.
So like jazz band or youth apprenticeship are built into the student's schedule. So I think that's how it's tracked. Well, the jazz bands are.
Zero hour?
Before, oh, is that what they call that?
Well, that's what I call them, but yes.
But I think they still fund their schedule still.
Yeah, like they're actually assigned. I would think in order to get credit, it has to be somewhere on your schedule. That's a good way to look at it, even if it's at that like zero hour, which is like before school. But I.
But I think it's just another policy that should be clarified. Because as I read, I read it differently than others.
Well, this is if it would, I read this list as kind of as an or list. Like it doesn't have to necessarily provide that. Maybe I'm just understanding what you're clarifying.
But, but the greater question I have is how many students know they might be able to get credit for participating in district sponsored clubs or activities?
I'll bet or not, but that, isn't that something that they would track and make sure that each student knows when they put together their schedules?
Yeah, but I, I think because there really aren't many clubs where you can get credit, that it is communicated to them and the students know that in advance. Because there's, I mean, it's not common for the, for the clubs. I would wonder if, you know, does, most of them kind of clubs, don't they typically fall under E? As opposed to D, but. I don't know if that's helpful.
I don't know. Again, it's, it's just a little confusing to me. And then Erin, can district funds be used for sanctioned clubs?
Can district funds be used for sanctioned, sanctioned school clubs? Yes, they are regularly. I mean, we pay the staff and.
Right. But what about the activities of the.
Yeah, supplies, materials for approved clubs.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, that does happen.
And then I think the second to the last clarification I need is board policy three, two, one, five.
Okay.
And four, two, one, four, the board policy on use of tobacco and nicotine by professional staff and by support staff. Is there some reason we can't combine those two policies and title it as tobacco use and nicotine by district employees or staff members?
Yeah, so this is, this is a topic that has come up before. I believe Bruce has brought this up. Is that currently our, our policies are set up separately for support staff and professional staff. And I've talked to our Neola representative about, you know, if there's a timeline to just adjoin common policies. And that is in the works from Neola.
Okay, good.
To do that, it would require, you know, at this point for us, it would require a pretty significant change from our policy book structure. So I would hope that we'd be able to kind of do that all at once.
Okay.
In a line. And there's others too, as we'll be discussing.
Yes. So I'm glad to see that that's in the works.
Yeah, so second, I agree, it's confusing, especially when they're identical.
Yes. And then the last. And then, let's see. Under, I'm just looking at my notes.
Yep.
Oh, again, under policy five, three, three, zero, medication slash emergency care. That's an eighty-eight word sentence in there. That's a heck of a long sentence. And to me, that's the longest sentence I've ever seen. Just my commentary though.
Thank you for your editorial.
But it doesn't have to be that legal. This, you know, board policy has to be easily interpreted by the reader, by our customers.
Well, that's the idea is to keep them concise and simple.
Or, or, or to keep them confused. I don't know. And then with that policy, Erin, the policy identifies bus driver, staff member, or volunteer authorized in writing by the district administrator or principal that they're immune from liability, et cetera. And is that notification really in writing or is it just a verbal thing?
Can you direct me where you, where you are in the policy?
Let's see, it's still medication slash, it's still policy five, three, three, zero.
Yeah.
It's bottom of page one, excuse me, no.
Okay, that helps me. I just want to make sure I see where you're talking.
Yes. It talks about authorized in writing. Do we actually notify our volunteers, bus drivers, and staff that they're immune from liability in writing? Or is it just sort of a, you know, something that's shared with them?
Wouldn't that be in their contract maybe? That they sign with the district?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't, obviously, I don't know either, but you would think that that, it would make sense that it's written into their contract.
I can check on that. I don't know. I've never signed anything. So. Is it part of onboarding, I think is the question.
Possibly, but we should take it out of that authorized in writing piece, take it out of board policy if we aren't doing it. Exactly, it would be a liability in itself, yeah.
You're right. If we aren't doing it, it shouldn't be there.
I'm happy to check on that.
Okay. And my last comment is policy seven, four, four, zero, facility security. And I know during this school year, when I go on into the buildings, you know, you have to check in, of course. And you have those machines where you put your driver's license and all that. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't work. Sometimes they work, but not really well. But I was told this spring that they were going to get new technology for the fall. You know if that's going to be, that's in the works?
Yeah, I don't know the timeline for each building off the top of my head. But we have been looking at improving those things, including having like a kiosk type system that's in entryways.
Mm-hmm. Well, I like that idea.
As well. So I can check on the.
Okay.
Timeline for those.
Yeah. It, it, it's just that if we have a process, we should make sure the process is fully functional.
So the kiosks would be like before they get into the actual office?
Yeah. You know, kind of like at the clinics now, where you can pre self-register or pre-register, whatever it is. Technology is only as good as technology, unfortunately, and it isn't a hundred percent reliable. But we need, in order to be as secure as, as possible, I think they're taking the right path. You know, I think they're looking to enhance or replace. I'm not sure which.
Well, I think the other thing is, yeah, before I got my school board badge, you know, I thought, why even do it? You know, if the machine isn't working one hundred percent accurate. So I'm glad to think, and I'm glad to hear things are in the works. And that concludes my comments for policy.
Thank you very much, Tom, for, for going into detail such as you do. That's, that's, that's one of the harder tasks of being on the board here.
Well, I think board, yeah, again, again, one last comment, Craig, is that knowing board policy and developing board, board policy or monitoring or revising it, that's one of our top three responsibilities.
Absolutely. So that's the reason we're here.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion?
One thing that I wanted, that I had asked ahead of time that I wanted to point out was in the policy two, two, one, zero, the curriculum development. The letters in that second part talk about the minimum standards. And so I had reached out to Erin to find out, you know, my, I, my suspicion was that McFarland probably goes above those minimum standards. And so I just wanted to basically provide them the opportunity to confirm that, and that was confirmed. I don't know if you want to speak more about that, Erin, or if you want me to pull up. But I think Melissa Foll brought up, or was gathering information about that. Because I think it's just important to recognize that some of those on here are really, really important. I mean, they're all really important, but not just, you know, some, the minimum standards feel very low to me.
They probably are.
I mean, and I, from my understanding of watching my kids go through the schools is that they're actually getting pretty consistent information about those, like in each of their years, even more than what, you know, Melissa officially provided to us. So I just wanted to recognize that, to make sure you guys have kudos for.
Yeah, I can talk about that. There are, so if you see in, in that, that policy kind of items, I think it's, it's K through O have some specific things that, that Megan had asked about. Just to keep in mind that these are just a sampling of their statutory requirements in terms of what schools need to provide, which is constantly evolving, being added to, being proposed to be added to. These have been fairly consistent with the, the Holocaust one being a more recent, M being a more recent one. So I'll just share a little bit about that. So, so K, you have that, that's talking about shaken baby syndrome. And that is something that is incorporated into our seventh and high school health classes. So we certainly, we meet all these requirements, but that's where we meet them. L is about financial literacy and that is something that occurs throughout a, a student's school career. Some of the more notable things is, you know, you have the money unit in sixth grade, the reality zone. Those, those are kind of some of the things that people know or high school econ. But, but financial literacy is, is integrated throughout the curriculum. M is about Holocaust and other genocides. And minimally, we're do, we're teaching about that in seventh grade social studies and 10th grade world history. N has to do with our indigenous people and the tribal, the tribes of Wisconsin. And that is something that we do very formally in fourth, fourth, seventh grade and 10th grade social studies. And that is something I've been a little bit more directly involved in. And then then lastly, just about multicultural education and where that's done. And of course, as you know, we have a intentionally inclusive curriculum statement, and that's something that's part of our curriculum review process. I will say, so that is done throughout a student's school career. I will say that it is notable that there have been districts in the state of Wisconsin that have been fine to be in violation of that requirement and other requirements in here and recent news articles about about them failing to meet those needs and having to come up with remediation plans. So I'm proud of of where we're at, and it's something that we have to continually look at so that staff know this is not an optional part of your curriculum, you know, this is a required part of the curriculum.
One thing that I think is is really interesting to note is the, there's really, what I've observed is that there's really interesting ways that I've seen teachers and staff incorporate this curriculum into their everyday things. I think about the the band performances and their, you know, their choice of music and the themes that they use for that. And it's, so it's just, I mean, as a parent who might just read this policy and say, oh, is that, are they only getting that at, you know, two times in their.
Right.
In their education, you know, but it's, I think it's really important for people to know that it's actually happening many, many times, you know, during the school year at every year.
You think about the the math lessons that I've seen about interest and compounding interest, and that's financial literacy.
Right.
You know, but but it's not gonna probably pop up on one of our lists.
Right, yes, exactly, so thank you for gathering that information.
Erin, is there any way in that portion of the policy where we talk about, we integrate much of the curriculum? Because I think, you know, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, we are talking about just financial, financial curriculum or literacy curriculum or math curriculum. Yeah, we integrate all those components together, so it's, you know, we do go well beyond the minimum requirements. But someone reading our board policy, if a parent were to read it, you know, they might say, well, why would I go here? We're just teaching the minimum. I think somewhere we have to state that as a district, we far exceed the minimum in many of those areas. I just think we're doing a disservice to our district by not recognizing, you know, all that is done through the curriculum, especially if it's integrated.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to think of how practically to do that or where in the policy to do that.
There may be a specific reason why they write them that way as well.
Well, I think they they always write them to the minimum so that if you, you don't want to write a policy that you're gonna, might violate. So, you know, write what's required and no more.
Right.
But but you could use language that is, you know, more aspirational or less.
Right, mm-hmm.
Less clear.
The last comment that I had about any of the policies was about, excuse me, question about the exceptions section in the tobacco-related policies about, in like a.
Oh, yeah.
It's, okay, let me find it, because it's really weird.
It's about having, yeah, so thirty-two fifteen, there's this exception about being able to have a product if used for the purposes of instruction, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And then, go ahead. No, no, I don't want to, because we had emailed about this earlier.
I just, it was, I couldn't, you know, as a parent reading it, it wasn't clear to me what that might be, so I asked Erin for an example, just so that we could know what it would be and if you want to talk today.
Yeah, so, I mean, I honestly don't think we do this, but the the scenario that they're providing exception exception to is if, say, a health teacher was, you know, showed showed a cigarette as part of the lesson, they wouldn't be found, you have violated this policy, there's no tobacco on school grounds, so now you need to be reprimanded, so it's the idea that if it is used for instruction. I think those practices are outdated, you see less and less of those than when I was in school, and it was like, here's what every drug looks like, that was kind of the way it was done, but, I mean, theoretically, they could do that. This is what a vape looks like, or this is what chewing tobacco looks like.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? If so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is action on approval of WIAA Girls Lacrosse Cooperative Team Sponsorships.
Aye.
Oh, I got a little delayed reaction from Bruce.
What happened?
I got it.
He was a late aye.
Oh, I got you, okay. Do we have any discussion on this, or I would look for a motion to approve the WIAA Girls Lacrosse Cooperative Team Sponsorship?
I'll move to approve the WIAA Girls Lacrosse Cooperative Team Agreement as recommended by administration.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I can second that.
I'll second.
Tom, thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a note for the public that we're not having a lot of discussion on this, because we've already approved moving forward, and this is just the formal agreement being being signed.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Action on approval of WIAA Boys Lacrosse Cooperative Team Sponsorship. I would look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the WIAA Boys Lacrosse Cooperative Team Agreement as recommended by administration.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
I'll second.
Megan, thank you.
Tom's fast.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Action on notice of academic standards for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute one one eight three zero one G A and one two zero one two thirteen, the School District of McFarland hereby gives notice that the Wisconsin academic standards are in effect for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I hear a motion?
Megan, go for it.
I move to adopt the Wisconsin academic standards for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll second that.
Thank you, discussion?
The only question is, how do we know that that's happening?
How do we know that we're following that model academic? Yeah, I I think it's a matter of our curriculum is based around those, its entire driving force. So in each curriculum review process, we begin by, you know, looking at the standards, looking at our current practices, and then looking at how we can better follow the standards. Where you see the the most work being done is when the model academic standards change. And so our curriculum review process is developed in anticipation of when the state is going to change their their standards. And so we're constantly up changing our curriculum based on these updates. And so Melissa Foal does an excellent job making sure the staff are aware of the standards and able to have time to unpack those standards.
Are are changes in those standards made fairly regularly?
Yes. Yeah, and they do that on a cycle as well, because they only have, you know, DPI only has the capacity to make so many changes each year. And sometimes they they say, you know, next year, we're coming out with the new math standards and it's two years or three years, but but we try to do that, but it is, it really drives our curriculum review cycle.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero, and I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Kate, thank you, second?
I'll second that.
Megan? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero, and we are adjourned at eight forty-two P M. Thank you very much, Bruce.